Good evening, I'd like to call the December 15, 2015, Pacosa City School Board Meeting to Order. Drew?
Our pledge reader tonight will be Timmy Trent. Timmy is in Ms. Richardson's kindergarten class. Timmy is the son of Mr. and Mrs. Timmy Trent, Timothy Trent. He has an older sister, Elizabeth, who is in second grade at PPS. Timmy loves to play on his iPad when he's not at school. His favorite subject at school is PE. Please rise.
(Music) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just and strong.
Thank you, Timmy. Our inspirational reader tonight is Tinley Goodson. Tinley is the daughter of Todd Goodson and Jennifer Thomas. She has two brothers, Jared in grade three at the elementary school, and Tate, who is in preschool. She loves to play outside when she's not at school. Her favorite subject is learning how to write. She will be reading a verse from the song "Let There Be Peace" by Jill Jackson Miller and Si Miller.
Let there be peace on earth by Jill Jackson Miller and Si Miller. Let peace begin with me, let this be the moment now, with every step I take. Let this be my solace vow to take each moment and live each moment with peace eternally, live, live, live. There be peace on earth and let it begin with me.
Nice job.
The student presentation tonight, this is "Here Comes Susie Snowflake" by Ms. Richardson's kindergarten class from Pacosa Primary School. They are under the direction of Mrs. Poto. Mrs. Richardson's class just finished performing this song along with other kindergarten classes last night when they presented their holiday concert. And students and parents, I'd like to ask, after the presentation, if you would stay with us just a couple of minutes, we have a couple of recognitions, and then we'll take a break, and we'd like to come out and visit with you before you all scatter off to your homes.
(Music) Here comes Susie Snowflake, dressed in her snow white gown. Tap, tap, tapping at your windowpane to tell you she's in town. Here comes Susie Snowflake, soon you'll hear her say, come out everyone and play with me, I haven't long to stay. If you wanna make a snowman, I'll help you make one, one, two, three. If you wanna take a sleigh ride, we need the rides on me. Here comes Susie Snowflake, look at her tumbling down. Bringing joy to every girl and boy, Susie's come to town.
I wish we could stop there. Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda tonight?
We do not this evening.
Okay. We're gonna move on to recognitions.
While Chairman Cass is moving to help give those certificates out, I do want to let parents know that this is being recorded, and it's live on TV, but we will also get it on our website under School Board Meeting, so if you want to see this again, or share the link with others, it's gonna usually take us a couple of weeks to get it up there. I first would like to recognize our Volunteer of the Month, so I'd ask that Maschina Booth come forward, please. I believe we may have with her tonight Donald Booth, her husband, and her son Reed in the audience, so thank you for joining us. She is the PTO president for our primary school. She is, has organized her team of parent volunteers to support the primary students and staff. Mrs. Booth's efforts have resulted in raising over $14,000 with the annual Walk-a-Thon fundraiser, increasing volunteer participation, spreading good news about the PTO events through social media, and rewarding students with special lunches, treats, and educational outreach programs. Mrs. Booth is regularly assisting teachers with cutting and laminating in our PTO Helping Hands Room, and is also creating the yearbook for the school this year. Mrs. Booth is always willing to help out the PPS school community, continuously asking what more she can do to support our school. Thank you for all that you do for our school, and please join me congratulating her again on being selected our Volunteer of the Month. Booth is yet another example of the wonderful volunteers that we have in our school system that we're so lucky to have. Next, I am very excited to recognize the Pacosa High School Varsity Volleyball Team. So as I call your name, please come forward, and we'll get everybody up here, and then I'm gonna read a little bit about them. Lindsay Lang. Tony Ann Whitlow. And Megan Hibbs is part of the team but unable to attend this evening. I'd also like to ask at this time that the coaches come forward, Mr. Tim Haddock and Ms. Nina Richardson. Additionally, they had two team managers who could not attend this evening, and we'll get their recognition to them, Sophie Pierrotet and Tristan Saddles. This team had many successful moments this year on and off the court. The players all learned about John Wooden's Pyramid of Success. The girls taught each other about the building blocks of this pyramid. They routinely referred back to the pyramid throughout the season during timeouts and pre-game speeches. On the court, they were able to win the Silver Division of the Endless Summer Tournament in September. They were undefeated the entire day. They reached conference finals, regional finals, and the state semifinals, with an overall record of 24 wins and only six losses. The team also provided community service through their Donuts for Cancer fundraiser. They were able to sell 130 dozen donuts in an hour and a half. All money raised was donated to the, to Pacosa resident in need. I also want to say that I had the absolute pleasure of watching them play in several games, and they were very exciting to watch. Please join me in congratulating the members of our volleyball team for their success and for being state semifinalists. And I know that several of our volleyball team members also play on our basketball team, and there's a game at 7:00, so I think we're gonna lose a few of them sliding out, and we wish them the best of luck. Go Islanders tonight. I now ask that the following members of the Pacosa High School One Act Play Team come forward. Cole Mercado. Chandler Holcomb. Amy McDevitt. I also ask that their coach, Ms. Ashley Ritchie, come forward as well, please. And this evening, we are missing Dell Crawford, who is unable to attend but was also part of our team. The Pacosa High School One Act cast of Virtual Family are state champions in the Virginia High School League Group 3A. They won the championship at the State Theater Festival held on December 8th at Monticello High School in Charlottesville. To reach the state event, each school qualified through conference and then regional competition, which included at least 30 competing plays across the state. Pacosa High School finished second at the Colonial Rivers Conference Festival and took second-place honors at the 3A East Region Festival. In the play they performed, Christian Kylie, author of Virtual Family, imagines a future where children are raised by pads or personal assistant devices that give them every tool, every piece of knowledge they could ever need to succeed in life. The only thing they do not learn is humanity. The cast members included Cole Mercado, Emily Edwards, Nick Biddle, Dell Crawford, and Colin Freeman. Chandler Holcomb directed the one-act play, and Sophie McDevitt ran the lights. Please note that for their spring 2016 production, our PH Dramas group will present "You're a Good Man Charlie Brown," and put it on your calendars, because we know it's May 6th through 8th. Please join me in congratulating the students and their coach for being Virginia state champions, and don't leave, let us all applaud, but then we need to recognize someone else. Let's applaud. So I now need to ask that Cole Mercado step forward and come see Chairman Cass. So not only did our team win the state championship, but we also had our student win the Outstanding Actor Award at the VHSL One Act Competition, and that obviously went to Cole. He's in his fourth year of participation, participation in the PHS Drama Company. Cole is a member of the PHS Drama Club and president of the International Thesbian Society, Troop Number 3133. He's a member of PHS Chorus and also All District Chorus. He takes dance, acting, and voice lessons, as well as teaches dance to children. He's been in productions with Williamsburg Theater and Thomas Nelson Community College. He plans on majoring in musical theater in college. Please join me in congratulating Cole on his accomplishment of being the outstanding actor at our state competition. And I must say, while I haven't seen the play, I've seen a number of them perform in chorus, and especially recently, this week, several times, and they do a wonderful job. So again, congratulations on being state champions. It's an incredible honor, and thank you for bringing that championship to us in Pacosa. Thank you.
Okay, now is that brief break, and we'd like to come out and visit with you.
The budget calculation tool from the Department of Education, which usually comes a couple of days or a week after that. So it'll probably be after the holidays before we have that detailed assessment of how the governor's budget impacts K-12 and specifically PCPS. You've heard me mention and talk about the audit for several months now. This is a process that began in May and was completed late last month. On the dais, you have two audit reports. The first is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. This is the blue document. And this is a combined report of the city and the school division. And I just wanted to, there's a lot of information in this report, a lot of statistical information and financial data, comparative analysis data. If you ever have trouble sleeping, you may want to pull this out and take a good read. But let me direct you to page 112, and that is the second to the last page. And this is the Schedule of Findings and Questions Costs. And in this report, there were two opinions that were provided by the auditors, one on the financial statements and one on the federal award. And you will note, and I have this highlighted for you, that the city and school division had two unmodified opinions, and that is the best that you can do. In addition, there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified in each one of the audits. So congratulations to staff. This was another excellent audit of the operating budget for Pecosin City Schools. In addition, there's a second report. This is the thin one. And this is an audit report on the activity funds. The activity funds are those funds that are held at the school, and they're the responsibility of the principal. In the review of the activity funds, this is not a comprehensive review of all of the accounts. What this is, is just merely a review of accounts, and then there's an appropriate level of test work that is performed to ensure that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respect to cash receipts and dispersments and the ending balances. And if you'll note on page three of the report, this is the report of the independent auditor, and I have that highlighted at the bottom, the opinion, and that's the exact opinion that the auditors came to, was that the financial statements for all schools were presented fairly in all material respects to the receipts dispersments and cash balances. In the back of the report, there are two letters that are paper clipped. These are two communications from the auditors to the school board and to the superintendent. The first is a letter that just provides information on the scope of the audit, and it also identifies any significant audit findings. And you will note that there were no significant audit findings that were identified. The second letter is a communication on internal controls. And on the first page of that letter, and I have highlighted, there were no material weaknesses that were identified. However, if you turn to page two, there were several minor material, or, I'm sorry, minor internal control deficiencies that were noted. And I'll just briefly review those with you. In the district-wide comment, this is a segregation of duties. This is something that we see year after year. And what this is, is due to staffing issues. We have one bookkeeper at each school, and because we don't have sufficient staffing, that one bookkeeper is responsible for a lot of the duties. So to help mitigate this weakness, we have the principal that reviews and approves, signs off on all of the monthly activity of the bookkeeper. In addition, those monthly reports come to the school board office, and they're reviewed by me and my staff. And at the end of each audit, my staff will meet with each of the bookkeepers to review the findings. So there's a lot of review and double check that's done at the school board office to help mitigate the fact that we do have some segregation of duties issues, but this is an issue that's been noted year after year after year. You'll also note in some of the other schools, there were, now, they don't do a comprehensive review of the activity funds, but what they do is they, in their test work, if they do find an item with policy or with practice, they will report that. And then that's what you see with some of these comments in here. We have one instance where a purchase requisition was not signed, I'm sorry, was not dated. Now, that's not significant, but we require those to be signed and dated. So because it wasn't dated, that's why it's being reported. I wanted to make you aware of that, that these are not significant, these are minor, and the auditors report these items to us. We will review these items with the bookkeepers and work on corrective action. So for this evening, for the two audits, these were excellent audits. Congratulations to the principals and the bookkeepers. They've done another fantastic job in their activity funds. In January, we have a new reporting requirement for the Affordable Care Act. All PCPS employees can expect to receive a new informational statement. This is a 1095(c). This informational statement will detail the employer-provided health insurance offer and coverage. So like the W-2 statement that we provide annually to employees, this has to be provided to the employee by January 31st. Because both of them have the January 1st deadline, we will combine both reports together and distribute those together to each employee. Because of this new reporting requirement, there may be some delay in when employees might receive their statements. In the past, our school board office has been really speedy with distributing the W-2 statement, usually the first, second week of January, but because we have this new reporting requirement, it may be the third week of January before we have both statements to the employees. We'll have a communication email go out to the employees the 1st of January notifying them of this new report, the new information statement, and also of a potential delay in their W-2 statement as well. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. And I'd like to thank you and your staff for the outstanding job and such a clean opinion. Great job there.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Bowen? Any comments?
Yes.
Typical school of our size, is there actually three individuals that work in each school to get deposits and write checks and ledgers? That can't be the norm, is it?
In some of the larger schools, there may be three office staff, and they may have that opportunity to have some segregation of duties. We've had the same office makeup since I can remember, since I've been here. So we've just learned to work within that. My staff is very good in answering questions and working with the bookkeepers. We've worked real closely with the principals. If the principals have questions and they're unsure of something that may have occurred in a financial transaction, they are quick to call me, and we work those problems out to prevent there being any issue in an audit report. So I feel very confident with the staff that we have, the training that we provide, the follow-up that we provide at the end of each audit, that our staff is doing a fantastic job, even though we lack the sufficient staff.
So it wasn't a product of budget cuts? This is our normal procedure?
This is the way it's been, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Pertaining to the additional forms that you're having to send out to each employee, what kind of time is involved in that and what kind of cost? Do you have any idea?
We've been anticipating this for the past couple of years. It's, there've been changes to the Affordable Care Act as we've, to the reporting and how that reporting is going to occur. Just in the past couple of months, has everything been finalized? It's taken many training sessions. It's taken staff time a lot to really understand. We have, what we believe, what we understand is our final reporting framework. It's with our attorney now, so that they can basically stamp, give their approval stamp on what we're doing. The IRS is not willing really to interpret data for you. They will direct you, when we have called them in the past, they will direct us to the publication, which gives you the legalese, but it doesn't provide you with, you know, some of the detail that you really need. So we've gone to our attorney. We hope to have those results certified by the attorney by the end of this week. But it has taken an enormous amount of time. We will be testing the reports after Christmas and the 1st of January, and that's why there will be some delay in getting those statements to the employees. But it's just, we've had very little time here towards the end of the year to try and really master this reporting.
Have you seen a sample of what the report would look like?
Yes, and they've been good to provide the samples. What's been difficult is interpreting the codes to use. There's a number of codes that you have to provide on the report, and you have to provide it for each month that employee was employed. So if you have a new employee that started in August, they're not eligible for our insurance until October 1. So there's a code of when that employee started, they're in a waiting period, then, and that's one code for August and September. Then there's a code for when they were actually eligible. They may have declined. If they declined, then that's another code. So it's making sure we get the appropriate code that the IRS has provided, and that's where there's been, there hasn't been real clear language on that.
And you happen to manually do that for each employee?
Yes, it's required. Probably the last two months, a compensation analyst has been working on setting that up in our finance system.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
And all employers can expect this, so.
Absolutely.
And employees. Thank you.
Mr. Pappas, can you share the operations update, please?
Good evening, Chairman Cass, School Board, Dr. Parrish. In operations, it's that time of year again. December is here. The school will be getting out shortly. And in the area of maintenance, we will be busy facilitating a lot of preventive maintenance work. The biggest bulk of that will take place at the high school with the chiller and the water cooling tower. Additionally, we will be replacing some well-worn carpet at the middle school in the west wing. You may recall that we did some cosmetic enhancements at the middle school this summer, and taking this up and replacing it with tile will culminate that activity. In the area of safety, the police department has developed a training program, according to Virginia State Code, to assist us with preparing our crossing guards. That training will ensue upon return from the winter break. Shortly, immediately thereafter, we will start our crossing guard out there in front of the elementary school and the middle school. Pursuant to Virginia State Code, all schools must do lockdown drills in the month of September and in January, and upon return, the police department is ready and the schools are ready to resume that drill activities. In the area of food service, we have a new food service director. She started with us full-time this week. Her name is Tina Wolf. She comes to us by way of Hampton City Schools, and she is very experienced and understands the unique needs of K-12. In custodial services, our students and teachers, of course, will return to all four schools to find the common hallways and cafeterias glistening after we take those high-traffic areas and bring them back up to their beautiful shiny luster. And in the area of transportation, you may have noticed on the corner of 171 and Yorktown Road, there's a big yellow bus with a big sign. If anyone knows anyone who's old enough to drive bus with a great record, loves children, we're ready, willing, and able to train them. And that concludes our operations report.
Thank you, Mr. Pappas. Any comments or questions for Mr. Pappas?
How many bus drivers are you looking for, sir?
The door is wide open. In fact, well, as many as can come in. We would love to have them. It's good to have substitute drivers.
Yes, sir.
And we just, from that sign, we actually found one, and that person finished their training, did a superb job, and will actually be ready to start here before school lets out on Friday. Will be their first driving day.
Fantastic.
Excellent.
But if you've got five, we'll take six.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Pappas. Dr. Colley, could you give us the instructional update, please?
Good evening, Chairman Cass, members of board, Dr. Parrish. My update this evening highlights student service in our schools. An important mission of our schools is to prepare our students to participate and to contribute meaningfully in the community and the world in which they live. During this season of giving and Thanksgiving, it seemed fitting to highlight a few of the many ways our students and schools are providing service to the community outside of those four walls. And our youngest students know that they're not too young to learn what service is all about. At Pecosin Primary School, students in all grades may donate 25 cents this year each Friday, and for that donation, they may wear a hat to school. The funds collected this way are donated then to S.O.F. Comfort, which is an organization that provides free adaptive clothing and comfort accessories to wounded service members from all branches of the military. This year, our kindergarten students also have been donating their free time to tend the school flower and vegetable gardens. In the spring, the first-grade students will take over and plant some native plants in the gardens to attract butterflies for the students to study. And finally, at the primary school, the students plan to host a food drive in late January in hopes to restock the local food pantry after all of the holidays. At the elementary school, students begin participating in organized clubs with a service-oriented focus. Some examples include the following. Students in K-Kids participated in a coin drive for UNICEF this year. They made teacher appreciation cards. They posted Veterans Day posters all around the community to thank our veterans. And they're currently working on a book DVD drive for homeless shelters. The Student Council Association, or SCA, at the elementary school collected toys for Santa's House this year, and that supports the boys and girls of Pecosin. Service at the middle school continues, and is evident in their clubs as well. Students in SCARE, which stands for Students Concerned About Restoring the Environment, continue this year to recycle. You remember, they started that effort last year, and they continue to make sure that the school is recycling on a weekly basis. The Builders Club at the middle school has also been busy. They've been collecting toiletries, snacks, pads of papers, pens, and other items, and they're using these items to make stockings for the Wounded Warrior Project. The middle school SCA is sponsoring several families in the community for the holidays, and they're also planning a spring service project geared toward one of our local nursing homes. At the high school, Helping Hands participated in Socktober this fall. They collected socks during the month of October and donated them to Avalon Women's Shelter. They also collected $253, which was donated directly to the shelter. The SCA sponsored a coin drive in November, and they collected $660 to donate to the food pantry. And the Key Club has been very busy this fall. So far, members have sponsored a canned food drive. They've parked cars for the different schools' back-to-school nights, and they also have served as tour guides. They were marshals at the PEF 5K run in October. They've been ringing the bells for the Salvation Army. They're working concessions at the middle school dances. They've served as dance partners for 5th and 6th graders who are participating in cotillion. And they've helped set up and take down tables at the local church bazaar. Key Club is busy at the high school. And then I'll close it out with something that we do for the entire division, and that is our Teens for Troops Club. They sponsor Cookies Because We Care again this year. This service project involves students and staff at all four of our schools, and they were busy baking cookies for our local troops. This year, we had a total of 9,216 cookies donated to the Langley Officer Spouses Club. This brings Pecosin's 10-year total donation of cookies to 115,836 cookies, and the local troops that received these are sure to appreciate those home-baked treats. These examples, the schools sent many, many examples. There are just a few of the many service opportunities our schools are participating in. I think it's clear that our students are becoming very civic-minded at a very young age, and I hope the board and community will join me in commending them for their efforts to connect what they're learning in school to the community and the world beyond them. And that concludes my update for this evening.
Great service report. Any comments or questions? Great job, thank you. Ms. Reimers, do we have any public comment tonight?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you very much. Mr. Melton, would you lead us through the consent agenda?
On our consent agenda tonight, we have the approval of financial reports enclosed, approval of personnel action enclosed, authorization to dispose of surplus property enclosed, and authorization to change apportionments in accordance with attached requests enclosed.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hux. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Rollins? Any questions, comments? Thank you very much. Call for a vote, please.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Dr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cass?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Moving on, consideration of approval of minutes of November regular meeting and work session. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments about the minutes? Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Abstain.
Dr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cass?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-1 abstention.
Item B, consideration of approval of certification of closed meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Reimers, will you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Abstain.
Dr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cass?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-5, 1 abstention.
Thank you very much. Item C, consideration of approval of first reading and move to second reading, change to policy manual 5-7.4 pertaining to travel expenses. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, as you know, we go through our policies periodically to make sure that we're aligned with not only state code and also what our legal counsel advises, but also our current practices. So in reviewing this policy, what we want to do is to ensure through policy that it's clear that for work-related travel, the first option that we provide our employees is to use school board-owned vehicles, because that does provide a cost savings to us. So we just see a slight change in the wording here so that we can make that clear in our policy, and that's our practice at this point, because we've got vehicles we can share with our employees. So I just recommend we approve first reading and move to second reading the change to this policy.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Carter, a second, please?
Second.
Any questions at this point? Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Dr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cass?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Consideration of approval of first reading and move to second reading, changes to policy manual 2-3.7 pertaining to parental involvement in education. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, again, this is, when we review this policy, we are recommending a change to it. We are required by federal law to have a parental involvement policy in order to receive some of the federal funding through the Elementary and Secondary School Education Act. What we are recommending here is that we remove the bulk of that policy and put it in a superintendent's regulation, so that if we need to make changes, we can do it in a very timely manner, because as you know, to make changes to policy, we have to bring it through first and second reading, which takes a couple of months for us. The recommended change here does align us with the rules in ESEA and also what we need to do according to the state. So you will see a deletion of a lot of information in this policy, but know, once you've approved this change after second reading, we'll be copying and pasting much of that with some changes we need to make into a superintendent's regulation that is available to everyone through the internet as well, so our website. So with that, I recommend we move this change to a second reading.
Do we have a motion to move it to a second reading?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Rollins?
When you're talking about cutting and pasting, the content remains the same. It's just the organization of the content that would move from the procedure into the superintendent's.
Correct.
Okay, so the content's the same.
Yes, there is some updating. You see at the back, and this is where we realize we really need to update it. At the back, towards the back of the policy, there's some information related to a specific year that has now passed us. So, you know, that needs to be updated, but yes, the bulk of this will be put in that regulation. But then, when we need to make these updates for the year, we can just do it naturally.
Okay.
Great question. And this regulation manual has the same authority or the same?
Yes, it does.
Scope?
Yeah.
And it'll still come before the board?
No, superintendent's regulations don't come to the board. Policy comes to the board. But you'll still have a general statement in here in your policy that will drive the parental involvement, but superintendent regulations are followed by staff throughout the school division. And that's why I mentioned, too, that they are on our website, listed right under your board policy, so they're there for everybody to see, too. Very transparent.
Any other questions? We do have a motion, a second. Ms. Reimers, will you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Dr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cass?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Item E, consideration of approval of PCPS capital improvement plan for fiscal year 16 through 20. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we presented this to you at your last work session last month. We have it up here on the screen, so if there are community members watching us through TV or via the web, they can actually see the capital improvement plan that we're recommending to you tonight. As we talked about in the work session, what you see, the difference from last year to this year is we have moved projects forward. We've also applied the Consumer Price Index to update pricing on the projects that are in the CIP. The one change that was a little bit more substantial was in the terms of the bus replacement schedule. You see on the bottom there on the screen, for those watching on TV, the schedule for bus replacement. We have nine buses that are 15 years or older. The state now funds school divisions on a 15-year replacement cycle. That was part of the budget cutting by the state. So in order to try and get more of our older buses out of the fleet, we've stepped up our recommendation here in terms of when to buy these new buses. I want to stress again with the CIP, at this point, these items aren't actually funded. We do send this to the city. They will include this in their CIP. As we all know, budgets have been incredibly tight for the last seven years, so the city has focused on stabilizing our operating budget and just have not had the funding to support some of our CIP projects, although they have funded us when they can, certainly in the area of buses, and then a number of years ago, a new boiler and chiller for the middle school. I want to highlight that the state of Virginia provides absolutely no funding for maintenance or construction. All of that funding disappeared in the first year of the budget cuttings, I believe, for fiscal year nine or fiscal year 10. So we are left to our own to try and fund any big maintenance projects or any construction. Certainly, I would hope in the near future, we'd see a change in the state actually assisting to fund K-12 as they do higher education, but we don't know what will happen in this budget year. As you will note, and as we talked about in the work session, we do have the middle school project sitting there on hold. Several years ago, we did do presentations with options for improving that facility, but because of the need to stabilize our operating budget, we've held off on continuing discussions between you and city council. We had quite a bit of discussion. We provided that report. It is my hope in the near future, if the budget year gets better and we stabilize the budget, that then we can move on to having discussions with them again about that project to address some of the needs of that building. We certainly appreciate what maintenance has done in the last few months in terms of making some cosmetic changes to improve it, but we've got beyond cosmetics, some things we need to do with that building. So with all of that said, I recommend approval of the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 16 through 20.
Do we have a motion for approval of the capital improvement plan?
So moved.
Chuck, thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions? I would like to, oh, go ahead.
$1.3 million for a roof seems like an awfully expensive roof. What have I missed? I mean, is it that big, or is it something about just plain size?
Yeah, it is, it's size. You're talking about the roof over the high school, very large roof, and when you get to do, you know, a repair, renovation of a roof, they are costly. Know that our estimates are based on, we had a roof consulting firm come and one look at the longevity of our roofs to see how long they can keep going, but in also them providing an estimate of cost. But roofs for schools are very expensive when you're looking at the entire roof, so it is an accurate cost, and that roof, as it is, is probably going beyond its guaranteed life at that point, but we keep pushing that out.
Okay. Any other questions?
Probably a minor point, but we have a $8,000 Probably a minor point, but we have a $8,000 difference in the bus of 2019. Are we anticipating some kind of a market thing there?
Well, some of that is whether we're buying a handicap bus in a, in a regular education bus. The buses are designed for students with disabilities or more costly, and we do need some of those, and there are some that are a little bit smaller, so there's a couple of different buses that drives that cost.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I would like to state publicly how thankful we are that city council has helped us with instruction and also the attention that they do give to our capital list, knowing some of the, the constraints that they are in with the budget, but they have been extremely supportive, and we're thankful of that. That being said, we do have a motion and a second. Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Dr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cass?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay. Dr. Parrish, would you kick off communications for us, please?
Yes, as I mentioned, I'm talking about one of your agenda items, the ESEA, which was the No Child Left Behind Act, has been reauthorized. It was a big week for public education last week, if any of our audience did not hear about that. So it was a bipartisan effort, both through Congress, and then was signed by the executive branch. So we will get more details in the coming months as the state begins to implement that. What we do know is it will provide some greater flexibility to the state, which will in turn provide us some more flexibility. So reauthorizing that was a good thing for us, and I believe the new title is Students' Success for All, or something along there. So No Child Left Behind has left us, and we have a new title. So we'll get more information to you about that. As Mr. Bowen mentioned, we are waiting for the governor's budget. We do believe that will likely be the best-case scenario for schools, and once we get numbers and can run that information, we'll get that to you, and then we'll be obviously watching closely what happens in the General Assembly in the coming weeks and months. I want to highlight somebody who's in our audience, and in the spirit of thanking people and mentioning people who do service, we have Gwen Lee with us here in the audience. She's our Military Community Liaison Officer, and she does a lot for our families and our schools. Last spring, she helped organize an incredible field trip for our high school students at Langley Air Force Base, and heard some people say it's the best field trip they ever took. And she's quick to call and help us, or if we have questions related to our military families. So I just want to thank you, Gwen, for everything that you do for us, and it's nice to see you with us this evening. So thank you very much. I want to congratulate our schools. I mentioned earlier that we had a number of our choral students here. We've just had some fantastic winter choral and band concerts. All of the schools have had them just about in the last couple of weeks, so congratulations to our performers, and I wish everybody a very wonderful break and holiday, and just a note to everybody that after Friday, our schools and offices will be closed for two weeks, and we'll be returning in that first week of January. So thank you.
Thank you. Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to start off at the primary school tonight. Parents and students enjoyed a night of reading with the annual literacy night, and students listened to stories and played literacy games to support reading and writing at home to help grow their learning and everything. The theme was smore reading. So the night was to end with campfires and smores for all the students and parents, but due to the rain, students had to enjoy smores in the microwave at their home. Instead, tastes the same either way. At the primary school, fourth graders attended Jamestown over the past month. Sixth graders came to the elementary school and presented their science fair projects to the fifth graders, and third graders have been using new envisioned math materials to learn multiplication facts, you know, nine plus, nine times nine, all that good stuff. At the middle school, Mr. Prell would like to wish all students and parents a safe and happy holiday break, and encourages students and parents and everyone in the community to read, read, read. At the high school, I'd like to repeat that Teens for Troops Participating in Cookies Because We Care, 9,216 cookies. That's crazy. That's 768 dozen cookies for local military men and women who cannot be home for the holidays. That's, that's just a crazy amount. I remember walking in the morning, boxes everywhere, cookies everywhere. It did not seem like that much, but that's still surprising. FCA and National Honor Society are collecting and packing boxes for Operation Christmas Child the last week of November. The National Honor Society has also decided to sponsor a family over the holidays. National Honor Society has also started a study partner program in which students have the opportunity to get study help from NHS members. Sophomores and juniors can apply until January 8th for the summer residential governor's school for agriculture, humanities, mathematics, science, and technology, or for the summer mentorship for engineering, medicine, health services, or marine sciences. The deadline for that is January 8th, and the guidance department has those applications. Your books are still on sale at the high school at a reduced cost good until the end of December for $50. Beginning in January, the price will raise to $55. And the Kiwanis International Teenager of the Year Scholarship Application Packet is now available in the guidance office and on Edline. The deadline is January 14th. I'd like to wish everyone a happy holidays and stay safe.
Great report, Drew. Did you do the cookie math, or was it provided for you?
Um, it was simple.
Good to hear that.
Mr. Hux?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No comment tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Rollins?
I'd like to welcome Ms. Wolf as the new Food Services Director, and I just love it when a kindergarten student does an inspirational reading. I mean, schools have that. That's wonderful, absolutely wonderful.
Thank you. Dr. Carter?
I had the privilege of attending Dr. Felton's Special Education Advisory Committee meeting last week, where Teresa Croson, the school's Occupational Assistive Technology Specialist, introduced some screen readers for those who have trouble reading. And it was, she walked us through, all the computers were set up, we actually had access to the program, and some of that is actually free. Read Out Loud, I believe, is the one that's free. You can just go get it for any, any family. And, and you can tell the screen where to start reading, where to stop. It just doesn't start at the very top with the copyright and go all the way through everything. You can tell it exactly what you wanted to read. So that, that can be very, very helpful to those with, with vision disabilities or just who are really struggling with, with their reading. So it was a great meeting. The next one is February 11th in room C-200 at Pecoson Elementary School at 4:30, and I encourage everyone to attend, anyone, especially if you have a son or daughter with a special learning need. Also attended the high school chorus concert, and it's amazing the talent that we have in, in the schools, and that was very, very entertaining. And I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, and be safe.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holcomb?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just like to sort of highlight again the state championship. I think it's been since 2010, since we've had one, if I'm not mistaken. Pretty incredible achievement. I wasn't able to attend, though I had a young man involved in the, in the play itself, but I, I heard that we were the smallest group there, that we showed up in a van, everybody was in buses and caravans and what have you. So an incredible achievement there. Very proud of this honor and for the city of Pecoson as well.
Great. Mr. Melton?
Oh, there are no, they're waiting for my quote of the, of the month, but instead, I'm going to summarize the remarks of one of our local business leaders. He talked about how important early childhood education is, and our elementary schools are, to the development of our youth. And then he took it another step further to discuss the pipeline from early education through middle school and high school, and on to the world of work. And this pipeline's success depends heavily upon what happens very early on in education. And the reason he gave for this was two simple words, national security. The ability to train young adults to serve in the armed forces and to help build the Department of Defense hardware that is needed to protect our country.